You're at six o'clock. We'll certainly give a few more minutes or a couple more minutes for folks to come in. We have a full council, but we'll still give folks another minute or two to log in. So hang tight. All right. Good evening, folks, and welcome to our regularly scheduled city council meeting for December 14th. At this point, I will call the meeting to order and ask that folks stand for the pledge of allegiance. All right. Thank you very much for joining us. We have a full agenda this evening, so we will begin with our approval of the agenda. So for consideration, council members, David?
Yeah, I'd like to switch number five with number one. I think as a matter of protocol, we were going to fill our vacancy spot first. So the person gets to participate in tonight's festivities.
And I believe we discussed that with the candidates and decided at the end of the meeting based on their preference. Eli, is that a true recall of the discussion?
The, what we did is decided that we wanted to have it at the end of the meeting. And as a result, whoever ends up being appointed, they could be sworn in for the next meeting.
Okay.
And, and then that was the purpose of that.
Okay, thanks.
That this way they can, you know, be prepared, have the whole agenda, be able to review it and be ready to attend the meeting.
Okay. Okay. I didn't know if there was like stump speeches or anything like that going on.
We'll certainly, we'll certainly open it up for the, the two folks who've expressed interest. But also since one of the individuals who expressed an interest is a member of the planning commission and that meeting is tomorrow. To be a counselor and a planning commissioner at the same time could present challenges. So we just wanted to observe that fact as a possibility.
All right.
Any other discussions, thoughts about tonight's agenda?
I'll move that we approve it then if there's no other unless you ask the public.
Any public comment on tonight's agenda? All right. Seeing none. And right now I think I have everybody on one screen, but I'm sure that'll change. So we'll bring it back to the council. So we have a motion to approve the agenda. And we have a second from Mr. West. All the, let's see. Yeah, our attorney last week or last meeting confirmed that we do need a roll call vote. So sorry for that, Gabe. If you could please do a roll call vote for each of our, our votes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, can I just verify that I'm being heard? Okay. I turned my mute button off.
You sound great.
Okay, great. So we'll start with a roll call vote for a motion by David Grover and a second by council member West to approve the agenda as submitted. And we'll start with council member. Oh, Davies.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Rover.
Yes.
Ladwig.
Yes.
Passes four to nothing.
Thank you, Gabe. Moving on to, we have a couple of minutes. And I need to scroll through my agenda for the dates. The first one, let's see, is from the December 14th meeting. Nope, sorry. That's today. This first one is for the October 12th meeting. So changes have been made to the October 12th meeting per request from Councilman Grover. And so that is in tonight's packet. Any substantive changes to the October 12th meeting minutes from the council?
No, I just said a, a matter of just to say we were going to look at something like that. And I did discuss it with the person who had issues with part of the minutes and something like that. I decided that we'll have to pull the water advisory committee or something together when we get stuff specifically like that. Because the council can't really make a sudden decision. We kind of have to have it planned out. So, um, so I am going to accept the minutes the way they are revised now as tonight, if that's what you're looking for.
Okay. Any public comment regarding substantive changes to the minutes from October 12th meeting? All right. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Let's, let's, uh, let's discuss the November 9th meeting. So we can do this in one fell swoop. So the minutes from the November 9th council meeting, any substantive changes from the council regarding the minutes from the November meeting? Seeing none. Any public comment regarding substantive changes for the November 9 minutes? Also seeing none. Uh, let's bring it back to the council now for a motion regarding the minutes from October 12th and November 9th.
I'll make that motion that we accept the minutes from October 12th and November 9th. Second man?
We have a first and a second. Mr. Adams.
Okay, first, Councilmember Grover seconded by West to approve the minutes as submitted for October 12th and November 9th. We'll start with Councilmember Grover.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davies.
Yes.
And Ladwig.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. And now moving on to council reports, committee assignments. I'm going to start with Councilman West.
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
All righty. Councilman Davies?
Nothing as well.
Councilman Grover?
Yes, I was able to attend RCA meeting. We did that early last month due to the holidays and we're going to have that meeting early this month due to the holidays. And so if anybody wants to participate in those, that's about all I have to report out for that now. On a more personal note, I was able to attend the Green Party General Assembly for California. A lot to do with ranked choice voting. There's a lot going on in our electoral system across the country that could affect our votes. A lot of disenfranchisement and things like that that we really got to be aware of because we can lose this democracy as, as quick as we got it. So if anybody's more interested in talking to me, get ahold of me via this council member D Grover at trinidad.ca.gov and I'll inform you more if that's my ability. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Grover. I was able to attend the Humboldt Transit Authority meeting where we continue to move forward in the county with replacing all fossil fuel driven buses with either hydrogen or solar powered electric buses. So very exciting. A lot of grant money out there that the state and federal governments are providing to move municipalities into a completely green transportation system. So there's also move to expand the ability for hydrogen charging stations in Eureka to also reach out to other folks beyond just the bus system. Other carriers might be interested in converting their vehicles over. So this county, this county is actually a leader in the state in securing this sort of funding and move to a fully hydrogen and/or electric bus system. So that's real exciting stuff. Okay. Thank you very much for the council reports, committee assignments. Any questions from the general public? Comments from the general public on our committee reports? Okay. Just want to put that out there. At this point, we will move into our staff reports, turning it over to our city manager.
Thank you. In the packet is the city manager's report. And in there, we indicated that the stormwater project has finally begun. They're working near the marine lab right now and and eventually will be working their way down towards the harbor. Then also mentions. Yes.
If we, okay, thank you. I was going to ask Ralph to mute himself, but he did. Thank you very much.
Okay. Also, we have the water plant, two new employees. We have Jamie Vincent, who is a T3 certified and Lael Lowry, who's T2 certified. So I wanted to give recognition to them. And the update for the cell towers for Verizon is that they're on track for activation of the replacement site. So the construction is expected to be completed this month. And by the end of the month, they're hoping to be able to place the new cell tower that's in West Haven online. So by December 31st. We have, at that point, they will be operating Quarry Road and the West Haven cell towers. And then testing those to see how they work compared to the prior connection that we have, which is the existing one from Trinidad head. And then if everything proves well, then they will decommission the Trinidad head site in January. And they said weather permitting, of course. In addition to that, we have our auditor, Ralph Marcello is on the Zoom call. I did want to introduce him. Under the.
No, I want to join. With the lodge.
Consent agenda, we do have the briefly make some comments. So I'll turn it to Ralph.
You're on mute, Ralph.
Like that commercial on TV.
There you go.
All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to perform your audit this year. And for the several prior years before that. This is my last year in the CPA business. So just for, just for those that are new on the council, over the several years, we've made a lot of recommendations to help the council improve their internal controls. Set aside reserves for replacement of those aging assets. And you've set up capital asset funds, which, I mean, excuse me, reserve funds, which are just about enough to cover one year's worth of operating expenses. In spite of the COVID, the city still was able to break even last year and did, and did okay. As far as recommendations, we've given many recommendations over the years and the city has always implemented what they thought was important. We had a good relationship over the years. So over this prior year, in spite of COVID, the city did pretty well. Unlike some of our other city clients, they did not have a deficit spending situation. Since we started this audit several years ago, the, the town has brought in over $10 million in grants to improve the infrastructure of the city. So we were glad to see that and we helped whenever we could with internal controls over those funding issues. Does anybody have any questions now?
And just to be clear, we can ask some minor questions and if we get into a deeper discussion, I will ask that we pull it from the consent calendar. So just know that, that if we're going to get into a discussion, that's where we'll go. But if there are some high level questions that we can ask Mr. Marcel, now's the time. Seeing no comments, questions, I can say, Ralph, two things. One, it's always a pleasure to read your audits. They're very clear and concise, easy to follow. And also congratulations on your retirement. That's well earned. So any, any comments from the public regarding our audit? All right. Seeing none. Thank you very much again. And this is in a consent calendar. It's in terms of accepting the audit. So thank you very much for joining us tonight, Mr. Marcel.
You're welcome. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
Back to you, Eli.
Yeah. So that was it for my end. Otherwise, as far as law enforcement, Lieutenant Miller has another meeting tonight. So he was unable to join us, but that's all I have unless anyone has any questions.
Any questions for Eli on the staff report?
Eli, did you get any information on the recycling program?
Yeah, the recycling program, which is based upon the SB 1383. We are working with the county and Humboldt Municipal, I'm sorry, the Humboldt Solid Waste Authority. And also all the other cities in the county. An individual, a firm has been hired that's preparing the compliance agreement and the organics for the SB 1383 requirement. And so Humboldt Waste Management Authority is leading that and the share, the city's participating in that so that they are completing our requirement because, and then that also includes a compliance services by Edgar and Associates. That's the firm that's doing the work for us. In addition to that, the city and the other cities in the county are eligible for the two-year compliance waiver. So we are part of that two-year compliance waiver because we are coordinating this effort to have Edgar and Associates prepare the organics compliance that's needed for the state of California. So that's all I had on that unless you have any further questions.
Any further, or last questions for? All right. Thank you for that staff report. We'll move on to items from the floor. At this time, members of the public may comment on items not appearing on the agenda. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes or less. Comments should be directed to the council as a whole and not to individual council members or staff. Council and staff responses will be minimal for non-agenda items. At this point, do we have any items from the floor?
Because of Mike Morgan, I have an item.
Go ahead.
Actually, if Gabe is there, he has a copy of it since I can't be there in person.
And what are you asking, what are you asking for?
I'm asking if Gabe has the copy of what I need to read into the record.
Mr. Mayor, I do, I did receive an email from Mr. Morgan. This, I believe it was yesterday afternoon.
And at this point, Mike, you're, you have the floor for three minutes. So this is your time to discuss what you want for items that are not found on the agenda.
Thank you. I understand that. I'm going to read in what I've also submitted to Gabe in print so that he can put it in the public record. It is our post from our business Facebook page. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
All right. Sorry, I haven't done this before except with court. So it says Trinidad Bay Bed and Breakfast Hotel. None of us are free from weakness. Since our first court hearing, I've continued seeking heartfelt reconciliation with our city of Trinidad government. I continue to ask that they meet and settle their issues fairly and equitably, but they continue putting me off for near on a year now. Are our city councilmen willfully ignorant or just lying their faces off? And why? City of Trinidad litigation against me and my Trinidad Bay Bed and Breakfast Hotel is not right. It has no merit. Do they seek to terrorize, intimidate and destroy me and my business? Seems so. For over a year now, the city of Trinidad council continues to prefer the course of justice with their unlawfully hired attorneys, attorney schemes, fraud and their obstructive malicious filed for a cooling off period, WV TRO. Humboldt County Superior Court case number CV 2100066, TRO City of Trinidad. The city of Trinidad council and city manager, Mr. Eli Nafal, have, one, excluded me in my business in regards to and throughout the 2020 seasonal outbreak coronavirus, i.e. the so-called COVID-19 disease reportedly caused by SARS-CoV-2 virus in 2020. Number two, continued their business relations, collecting POC taxes from my business and in doing so, accepted my business counter to their inapplicable moratorium on STRs, short-term rentals, resolution 202002, and their fraudulent moratorium on STR urgency ordinance 2020-03. Number three, wasted over tens of thousands of dollars pursuing litigation with some additional $80,000 budgeted for next year. All while refusing to even discuss my offers of reconciliation and settlement since our very first court hearing. While Tyler continues to extraordinary care of our guests and they continue staying with us in these unprecedented times and in impressive numbers, I will continue fighting back, saving Trinidad Bay Bed and Breakfast Hotel for yet another year, 2022. Thanks to all our guests and our supporters and thank you for listening.
And I just want to make sure that the council knows that we are not able to, by the Brown Act, discuss ongoing litigation in the open session. So thank you for your comments, Mr. Morgan, and we will move on. Other items from the floor. Going once, twice. Thank you very much. Four items from the floor. At this point, we will move on to our consent agenda. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is requested by any council member, that item is removed from the consent calendar, considered separately. On the consent agenda is available to the public. And since we've already approved the agenda, I'm assuming that there are no, there's no interest in pulling anything from the consent agenda. So at this point, from the council, at this point, I seek public input on the consent agenda. All right. Seeing none. I'll bring it back to council. Do we have a motion to approve our consent?
Move to approve the consent agenda and I'll second it.
All right, Mr. Adams, we have a first from West, second from Grover.
First from West, second from Grover to approve the consent agenda as submitted. We'll start with Councilmember Grover.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davies.
Yes.
And Ladwig.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Moving right along, we are into the discussion action agenda items section of our council meeting tonight. Number one is discussion presentation regarding local road safety plan. Eli, would you please introduce our speaker?
Yes. So for this item, we have been working with GHD and also our grants coordinator, who is, or grants administrator, rather, Becky Bryce Hall, I have been working on this item. This is our local road safety plan and we do have, let me see here, I've got my sheet. So Catherine Kleinschmidt is with us from GHD and she does have a PowerPoint presentation. So I'm not sure if Becky's going to go next or if Catherine is going to go next, but either way, I'll turn it over.
So Catherine, you go ahead. Okay, I, shall I share my screen? Is that the best way here? Okay. Let's see. How did that work? Can everybody see my screen?
Looks good.
Okay. Mayor Ladwig, council members, thank you for the opportunity to present on the local road safety plan or roadway safety plan. They're interchangeable terms. You know, different agencies call them different thing. FHWA calls them local road. Caltrans, of course, says local roadway, but it's the same thing. And it's my pleasure to present on the safety plan. I just wanted to go over the agenda of this PowerPoint. I'm going to go into the background, the overall process and how we developed our vision, goals and mission statement, as well as we had a stakeholder working group that was developed from different safety partners in the area that helped with the development of the plan, as well as the collision analysis, public outreach, and then our recommendations. So the reason we had to conduct this plan was this is a requirement now coming from Caltrans. So for federal money that kind of comes down to the state of the California for their local roads, they have to adopt a strategic highway safety plan every five years. And now Caltrans is requiring that each agency adopt a local road safety plan. So they're eligible for HCP funding. HCP funding is Highway Safety Improvement Program funding. And the requirement for their next cycle, which will be sometime around April 2022, in the next few months, this is required. So it's important for us to present this to you tonight and then we'll be on the agenda, I think, in January for adoption. And so how did this start? Well, City of Trinidad did receive a state grant from Caltrans Local Assistance Office to perform this local road safety plan. And it needs to complement the Strategic Highway Safety Plan, which is a data-driven, data-driven process in reducing fatalities and serious injury roads. Right here, you see the five traffic safety Es. So we tried to have stakeholders that represent these groups and not only engineering, but looking at our emergency responders being part of it, our educators from the school, as well as the police department or sheriff's department enforcement. And then looking at how emerging technologies might also help improve safety. This is the overall process. You establish your leadership, which I'll get into next, is our safety partners. We looked at safety data. Trinidad doesn't have a lot of collisions. We'll get into that. And then we looked at emphasis areas, strategies, how to prioritize those, incorporate. And then eventually this plan will be evaluated and updated. So we reached out to the safety partners that, starting with the city, I work with Becky and Eli, as well as Caltrans District One, the Humboldt County Public Works, as well as their sheriff's department was part of it. Trinidad Volunteer Fire Department, as well as your school district was part of it and Trinidad Ranteria. So we would have these two different stakeholder meetings and discussing what it was that we're trying to accomplish in the plan. The first meeting was held on May 25th and we looked at the overall process as well as the collision data. And we determined some emphasis areas that we wanted to focus the plan around pedestrians, aggressive driving, speeding or speed management, distracted driving, intersections and bicyclists. Second meeting, we looked at public comments. We do have a public website that's live right now and the draft is actually on that website for review where people can comment. We also collected comments through that website from a survey and interactive map and I'll get into that later on. And then we looked at also the next step in getting the draft and the stakeholders did also have opportunities to review the draft and provide comments. The vision is Trinidad will develop a comprehensive safety plan with the engagement of stakeholders and citizens that encourages improved safety for all users, whether it's walking, biking and driving, because every person in our community matters. That kind of supports the mission statement, what we're trying. That kind of supports the mission statement, what we're trying to accomplish is a safe, sustainable and equitable multimodal transportation system, as well as we have goals where we want to focus some of these needs. We want to make sure that we're encouraging safety for pedestrian and bicyclists, improve safety around schools. You know, how can we reduce the potential for fatal and severe injury collisions? Because right now, I'll get into the collision data, there are none of those collisions, which is a great thing. You know, that's one thing that's actually a nice thing that came out of this is there's not a lot of collision history. So we want to really look at how can we keep this safety going in ways we can systemically improve. So here's the collision data. This is 2016 to 2020. There was one collision recorded in 2018. These are all right around that Trinidad Scenic Drive Main Street. One was a side swipe collision. It was property damage only, so it wasn't an injury collision. And it was failure to stop. Or, you know, there's a multiway stop down there, but not every leg kind of stopped. So I believe what happened was someone wasn't yielding the right away, as well as there was a hit object collision, single vehicle. So a part of this plan, since we didn't have really collision history to mitigate existing collisions more or less in a reactive approach, we looked at how can we improve safety by just looking at the risk characteristics of the roadway? This is called systemic, where you look at what types of roads that you have currently in the city of Trinidad, as well as what have higher risk characteristics. And some of those that we looked at might be, you know, the speed of the road, lack of safety countermeasures, your approach geometry, geometry, if there's a skew, pedestrian facility, a presence of that or a lack of, as well as school. So we also did some public input. There was an interactive project website where you could pinpoint your concerns. You can draw up like a driving, school comment, biking, pedestrian. We got 45 interactive map comments. The City of Trinidad advertised this website, as well as the county of Humboldt did too. And actually, the school sent out notification through one of their newsletters. We also had a project survey where we got data. I believe there we had about eight of those surveys completed. When we looked at the identified roadway issues, it was kind of evenly split. It wasn't really one thing over another, but it was concerns was that intersection, pedestrian collisions, speed related, distracted driving, bicycle collisions, lack of infrastructure. There were some locations that kind of stood out. Hector Street in Underwood, where you've got that the rain garden there, East and West Street, Edward Street, they wanted some pedestrian improvements along there, sidewalk crossing. Trinidad Scenic Drive really would like some improvement on that for both bicyclists, pedestrians. There was some note that there was mentioned some school age children they've seen walking on there. We know there's, you know, very narrow shoulders, so that could be a great project to improve. And so H SIP has different eligibility. Some of the H SIP projects are funded through a benefit to cost ratio, which you have to have a collision history because you have to mitigate existing collisions. The other way that they have funding is through set aside. So what we kind of looked at was we looked at your collisions, which isn't much, looked at systemic analysis, looked at public comments coordinated. And then we kind of looked at, you know, where we were at with the H SIP funding and recommending countermeasures. Trinidad was very successful last call in getting actually the set aside funding. And I'll go into that for guardrail, pedestrian crossing enhancement and edge lines. And that's because it didn't require any collision history. It was just basically you have to apply and show a need. So this was the last call for projects, which was in 2020. Trinidad received funding for edge line and improved striping on Trinidad frontage from Northwest Heaven to end, as well as Stage Coast Road and West Heven Drive from City Limits Trinidad Frontage Road, as well as replacing and upgrading guardrail systems and end treatments on Scenic Drive and as well as on Patrick Point. And then there were three locations for rectangular rapid flashing beacons. Those are those pedestrian crossing enhancements for the existing crosswalk across Main, as well as two locations on Edwards. And these were coordinated with other projects in the area. Other recommendations that we're looking at is a lot of the signs were faded, could use some improvement. Typically, you have to do a sign on it, a reflectivity study before you can get signs funded through that. So that might be something the city decides to pursue. Roadway lighting as well is, is, is could be an improvement, especially for the crossing locations. And a speed survey, we did notice there's a lot of roadways in the city that are posted 15 or 20 miles per hour. Those typically do require a speed survey. But we do have the laws changing as we speak. Assembly Bill 43 was passed, you know, longer setting speed limits by the 85th percentile. Once this gets adopted and incorporated in the M U two C D. But that will allow business and residential districts to have 15 and 20 mile per hour speed limits, as well, you know, as other characteristics. If you feel like the speed limit should be lowered based on pedestrian or bicycle activity, it gives the city a lot more flexibility to adopt this with an ordinance. The thing about this law is even though it was signed, it's not going into law until probably the end of June 2024, but some of the components aren't coming online as soon as January 2022. We did, and our outreach did put a thing about a roundabout at that location that you have Main and Scenic and Patrick's Point. And we got good feedback, the citizens and the folks that entertained that were open to the roundabout. And then as well as we want to mention, Trinidad Rancheria did do a study back in 2017. Project study report for that very thing there, based on the full build out. And this, you know, would have to be reevaluated if the decision was to move forward, but that could be a nice intersection improvement at that location. Another location we looked at is Hector and Parker Street. It's currently in a way where vehicles can actually, you know, you can have two-way traffic on, on, you know, this side, which seems like left to center. So we're looking at possible improvements, but we know the city bus still goes down there. So we wanted to make sure the city bus could still kind of go down this and we may have to, you know, put some pavement. But that could be a nice improvement to kind of make it more, you know, with roadway intuition, that you have one side that's, you know, one way, the other side is going the other way and then two-way traffic down there. Other improvements are the striping improvements where you're adding that thermos plastic striping and replacing the bot dots on many of the roads listed there, as well as adding sharrows. Because you have, you know, narrow streets, lower speeds. It's very appropriate to put sharrows, share the road with cyclist markings on it, as well as the speed feedback signs or other improvements that could be nice in those areas where you want to bring attention to, you know, slower speeds, where you have school zones, where you have the entrance into the city, as well as on Edward Street, that could be another location. And these are other engineering countermeasures. This is a curb warning sign when you look at, you know, some fixed objects that are close to the clear zone. You can delineate them with the reflectors, as well as if you have a major curve, you can put some horizontal Chevron signs. And then other improvements was installing high friction surface treatment that will help with, you know, different roadway characteristics where there's curves or vertical curves to keep the vehicles on the roadway, as well as you can look at how to potentially install some bike lanes or bike access. And then since Trinidad Scenic Drive, the Scenic Drive doesn't really have room for shoulders, right? You know, to put any, we thought, well, maybe put some rumble strips down the center just to keep people within their lanes. But I think a nice improvement would ultimately be to widen that road and add shoulders and bike lanes too. Other things we not only covered was engineering, but also education countermeasures. You can't solve everything just with engineering. So Humboldt County was part of that and they were happy to partner and have different campaigns for driver education, pedestrian, bicyclists, safe routes to school outreach, speed management strategies, you know, emerging technologies. I think the thing that might be the most applicable and probably the city has one or two of these is those changeable message signs that you could put out, especially if there was any public events enforcement, looking at where you need to target those areas based on residents' feedback. Or if you're getting an area where you're noticing a lot of DUI collisions, get the enforcement out there, as well as just maintain and improve roadway access for emergency responders and a disaster preparedness plan. And so where we're at, we have the final draft document. And I kind of just presented the findings. It's a living document. You can update as needed, but a typical formal update every five years. And with that, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Catherine. Becky, were you going to add to this discussion? I'm not sure.
I don't have anything to contribute.
Okay. At this point, perhaps Catherine, if you could unshare your screen just so that I can see all the different members who have logged in tonight.
Yeah.
And then we'll pose. Let's see, city councilors, let's start with council. Do you have questions, comments for Catherine?
Yeah, I wondered how much you looked in Edward Street? Because it's very dangerous down there. I've been the audio speed sign for a while, telling people it's 20. Because when they do 30, it's like 50% increase. And it's, it's really dangerous just opening the car door because it goes past the white line, which is technically the cars area. So I just wondered if that's something that you studied a lot or looked into the future? Because it looks like enough room for a sidewalk to be on the other side without bothering anybody's lawn frontage, because all the houses are hundreds of foot back, plus it would allow them to see when they pull out. There's always been like a problem with people getting onto the road when it's busy, if people are doing, you know, more than they should, like when they get doing 25 or 30. I just wondered, I didn't, I didn't see quite as much of that as I wanted to. But is that when you were talking about the number threes with crosswalks and stuff like that?
Yes, Councilmember Grover, that's a great question. I know Edwards did come up as an area of concern. And I believe, and I know Becky, you could chime in. I think there's another improvement project to help with some sidewalk in that area too. This, the H SIP was just the crossing improvements. But H SIP, this typically feeds into H SIP funding and they don't fund sidewalks, but A T P do. So we could identify other funding mechanisms, but I believe there might be already an improvement in that area. But we did recommend speed management wise, we did hear that that was an area of concern, possibly putting a speed feedback sign or getting additional enforcement. It's just not a whole lot, you know, maybe some striping improvements, I think that was also identified.
Thank you.
So this is Becky and the city did have an active transportation program grant. However, that did not, was not able to be completed and it was proposing improvements on Edward Street, but there wasn't any consensus or agreement on what those improvements would be like. So we didn't get past the design phase on that. But certainly if there's a desire to pursue that, then the city or I could look for grant funding to work on a project like that.
Okay, yeah, because you can see where the sidewalk kind of ends. And when I'm walking, people look at me confused, like, am I on the road or am I supposed to be there? So there's, it looks like there's room for it for sure. So I'm, and I'm sure that, you know, the people that live there would, would be accommodated properly. So thanks.
Catherine, I have a question. So there were quite a few recommendations, quite a few areas to discuss. Just curious if the grant is an all or nothing type grant? Or I imagine there'll be lots of, you know, input on the design and whatnot. I'm just curious how restrictive the grant is? And could we use, say, part of it for some of the projects, some of the recommendations, but not all?
Mr. Mayor, that's a great question. Yeah, the, the, the next cycle comes out in April 2022. And so you can evaluate what would be the most competitive grant application at that time. We can also mention other grant opportunities in this plan if you'd like to. But the next H SIP call, because you don't have collision history, you would probably have to go after set aside funding again. And since you have that last cycle, it might be better for, there's a set aside for tribal. So maybe, you know, you focus on that scenic drive, but that's the thing, the H SIP funding is very competitive. So it is kind of a catch 22. We recommend, you know, different countermeasures, but sometimes for those to be funded, you have to show a collision issue to benefit, to warrant a, you know, a benefit to cost ratio. But there could be possibly other funding mechanisms. The funding does change and it's important to capture the needs in this plan. So then when those funding opportunities arise, that will kind of support that project.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, comments?
I have a quick one. It's just next month, you're going to come back in January, you said, too. And we're going to be looking at the next phase of this. And what would that be that we'll be doing next month?
Councilmember West, next month is the adoption of the plan. So we wanted to give you an opportunity just to present. So tonight I'm just presenting on the plan, trying to answer questions as well as incorporate any comments. So then I can finalize the plan and we can make a motion through a resolution to adopt the local road safety plan. Because it is important to have an adopted plan. It does hold weight and it holds a lot of weight in the funding as well.
There's a lot of, a lot of things in this that looks like a very expensive amount of work to do, to try to do all the things you say here. So we are going to narrow these things down somewhat. Is that the idea? And I'm just not sure about the, exactly the next step before January, what we're going to be doing.
The plan is inclusive. It doesn't have to be narrowed down. It's actually better to have a wide swath. So if you do want, you know, to cater it however you want, you've got a laundry list you can look at.
So all these things are possible. We just will pick the ones that fit us the best.
Yes, but the, so we're just, so I guess the, I don't, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to review the plan, but the plan basically just says all the different things systemically that can be done. I mean, if you want to whittle it down to the best opportunity, we can do that as well. Right now, we're just having the list as it is.
That's great. Thank you.
Tom?
Yeah, thank you. I just have a couple of comments, so, and they're comments that I've made in the past. And it very much concerns me that the city of Trinidad chases grants because there's money out there to the detriment of what our city needs to look like. And in this plan, I see flashing crosswalk lights, large shero paintings on narrow secondary roads. This is leading to the urbanization look of the village of Trinidad. The neighbors that I speak to, there's also a public comment that didn't make it on the website tonight. There are a lot of people very concerned about sidelines, center lines on secondary streets, sharrows, Chevron horizontal signs for turning, you know, that are more appropriate for highways, high-speed areas. So as we move forward and looking at potential projects, I hope we can keep that. I hope we can keep that in mind for our town. The roundabout was discussed as part of the gateway project years ago as a positive thing for the town. But there wasn't funding and et cetera available for that. And I think that would be a great thing and some the guardrails and such and scenic drive definitely needs to be upgraded. That's but let me remind you, you know, there are two, two crashes. You know, and we don't have, like she says, the high collision incidents going on. I hope we're not just going after money so we can spend it to mark up the town with bright sidewalks and sidelines and things like that. And many streetlights. So that's my preference is purely safety things in the areas that matters, the intersection at scenic and Patrick's Point and Main Street is a very precarious thing that everybody can agree on. But some of these other things, I, you know, I really hope we can carefully weigh these other options. Thanks.
And I would, I would fully agree with you, Tom. And that's really why I was asking Catherine about the, the all or nothing. I think there are some, some obvious areas of concern. I mean, I'm grateful that we have a low collision rate and I've witnessed many possible, or potential collisions, right? So we've avoided a lot. So I know it's not as clear as just, well, there's only been two. There's, there could have been more. And there are areas of great concern and areas of not. So if we can, if we can move forward to January with a laundry list, but not be required to, you know, do all of the different recommendations throughout the city, then I'm comfortable moving forward. At this point, I think I would, actually I see Becky, you turned your camera on. If you want to weigh in, that'd be great.
Yeah, I just wanted to suggest a couple of possibilities. One would be to include comments about concerns about the visual aspects or other concerns. We could also have a process because this plan is basically your recipe ideas. It's not saying this is what you have to do. So it's kind of like your menu in a way and that when funding opportunities arise, the council could consider, which I mean, assuming that we have a match between potential projects and the funding, the council could weigh in at that time and say, no, we don't really want to do that. So that in other words, there's another level of approval of any particular idea that's in this plan.
Excellent, excellent. Go ahead, Tom.
That's kind of why I made the comments I made. I want to plant the seed for things to be looking ahead. Because things have happened, like one day I walked out in front of my house and there were white lines bordering Ocean Avenue and then nowhere else in town. And it just is very bizarre and it looks like an airport runway because it's a straight street and it actually encourages people to go faster down our street markings like that. So you know, I don't know how that occurred. It wasn't through one of these grants, I don't think, but it definitely occurred. And so just keep in mind what you wish for.
At this point, thank you very much. At this point, I'm going to bring it out to the public and see if we can get any public questions, comments for Catherine or for Becky. All right, a quiet crew tonight. Bringing it back to council then, any final comments for Catherine and Becky moving forward? Looking to, looking ahead to January, when this agenda item will come back?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Showed a lot of potential and a lot of what's going on and make it smooth system. So thanks.
Yeah, thank you for your time and we look forward to continuing the discussion.
Thank you.
At this point, we will move on to item number two. Discussion decision regarding water master services agreement with Pacific Watershed Associates. Eli?
Okay, so it's included in your packet, the master services agreement that's being proposed with Pacific Watershed Associates. It also has attached to it the exhibit which has the scheduled rates. But in addition to that, the last two pages of the proposal here is called task order number one. And under there, the, it should be like two bullet points. With the first bullet point, which currently says task one is project oversight administration. And the second bullet point, which currently says task two is City of Trinidad Water Storage Support Services. We have on the line available tonight Todd Kramer and Danny from Pacific Watershed Associates, Danny Higgins. So both of them are available to elaborate on this and to help answer any questions that you may have. So I'll turn it over to Todd and Danny.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Eli and council members. Looks like my video wasn't working right there. I'm sorry about that. Anyways, you know, we're proposing to follow through with what was agreed upon as the, in the previous motion and in the previous meetings and work, you know, to identify properties near the plant and potentially serve as an alternative for water storage locations. Now, in the process, which is difficult to, for gaining public outreach, we will use our slope maps and ID parcels near the water treatment plant. And with that, you know, we can work with interested landowners to find suitable places for water storage. During the critical dry periods, that water storage would be used to offset use from the stream itself to supply the city with with water. And that's raw water, not treated water.
Yeah, I can, I can jump in here also. Can you hear me all? So based on our previous discussions, you have a lot of alternatives available to you in short and long term. And what we're proposing here is to just take this to the next step is to explore the neighborhoods as, as near to the current treatment facility as possible to see if there's any interested properties that are, would be environmentally suitable to house, you know, storage of raw water. And it's really a kind of an intermediate approach. You're doing a lot of things in the short term to en- ensure your security in the near futures. This is something that would probably pan out with the best of fortunes, let's say, two summers away, something like that. And the idea is to locate if there's any interested properties, whether they can be purchased or leased or some kind of arrangement could be worked out. Really, this is just an exploratory phase where we intend to do outreach to the communities. But do initial screening of these properties where we would focus the outreach to where we think that they would be environmentally suitable and the least easy to, on, on paper to permit additional storage. And we're really talking larger capacity tanks than what you currently have available for your short-term storage supply. And as we've presented to you in the past, really the strategy is to be able to divert raw water in the winter and store it in these locations for subsequent treatment. So you'd be able to pump that water out of the creek when there's a lot of water available and there's no issues with water supply or flows or other beneficial users. You'd have the water and then come in our critical dry periods. If we're really having another really critically poor water year and your other measures are not panning out in terms of ensuring available water for the citizenry. That water could be then gravity fed back to the treatment facility for treatment. So it enters your system for feeding, feeding your communities. So initially we would be, the properties will dictate how much storage you could possibly have. But we're envisioning, you know, things on that half million gallon storage tanks initially. But determining any available properties is really the key. There may be none. But we think it's a worthwhile step to at least explore this with our understanding of the watershed. And that would be if there was any, any interested landowners, whether it was leased or to sale. Then that would enter into another whole process where the city attorneys, real estate people, everyone else get into, get involved about whether that could really even come to pass before you'd ever get into the nuts and bolts of beginning to develop plans for storage and, and all the infrastructure that would be needed to lay lines for, for pumping that raw water and then having it come back to the treatment plant in future late summers when, when it might be necessary. So it's just giving you that ace in the hole, along with all the other things you're doing. If in our search, we are, and we intend to reach out to Green Diamond as a large industrial owner. And it's those size properties that in all likelihood would be the only locations where if you had a willing landowner, that you could probably be viewing properties as possible reservoir sites. We're really talking, you know, tank, tanks that are in a suitable location. It's not offensive to any of the neighbors. And, and see if there's any initial interest out there. So a little more focused effort on locating properties that might, might be able to, the city might be able to work with.
Question for you, for both Eli and, and PWA. If I'm reading this correctly, the, the master agreement is for all services as well in general, plus task order number one to, to survey for suitable property, right? So this master agreement is in place until 2025, at which point we'll review it. And we're also discussing the, the specific task of looking for property. Am I, I have this correct?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure that we're all looking at the same thing. So at this point, questions, comments for PWA or city manager regarding the, and I'm going to keep it with the council first and then I'll move out to the public. So Paula, you can leave your hand up. I see you there. Any questions from the council clarification for PWA or city manager? Go ahead, Jack.
I have one question. We have, you are also, along with what you're doing here, you're also being, will be watching for methods, maybe getting funding, grants and other items that if you, you may find along the way, you'll be trying to feed that to, to us as well. Is that correct?
Yeah, that, that's not a specific task listed here, but based on our discussions before and we've passed on some thoughts to you in the recent past, we're constantly looking for possible grants that, that might benefit the city in any way, shape or form to improve your water security.
Other questions, comments from the council? David, did I see a hand go up or no? Looks like no. At this point, I will bring it out to the public. Paul, I see that your hand is up and don't forget to unmute yourself.
What's the advantage of having tanks on private property up in the watershed compared to just having the tanks by the water treatment facility? And related to that question is, does the city own X amount of square feet around the water treatment facility that would be able to be placed tanks near the treatment facility? It would seem like a whole lot of extra work to place tanks up in the hills. Couldn't you just have the piping go to tanks that are at the water treatment facility?
I, unless someone from the council wants to answer that.
It's for you. It's for you, Danny.
Okay, thank you. We, we are, we're, tanks, tanks are a lot of weight. There's a lot to citing them and we're trying to locate locations that don't require grading. Lots of cutting and fill into the hill sites. The current water treatment facility and, and your water supply location on Luffenholz Creek is on very steep slopes and on the inner gorge to Luffenholz Creek. And we, we provided those maps to the city. There, there's several there that we used in our presentation a couple of months ago. It's really, it's really worthwhile to look at those carefully because the non-colored areas are very steep hill sites. And there's just no way with the seismic risks in the Trinidad region and the North Coast in general. You're, you're, we're not going to be, there's no way we'd even propose, let alone get permitted storage of, of tanks on, on steep ground like that because it involves significant grading. And, and to my knowledge, the city does not have really any other, you know, excess property in the vicinity of the current treatment facility.
That's correct.
We're looking for flat ground and it, yes, it'd be great if there was, if the treatment facility was on a marine terrace. But we had the flat ground right there. We wouldn't even gone to this step, but it's just not, you know, it's not practical. So we're, we're trying to locate properties with willing landowners as near as possible.
Other questions for PWA or city manager from the general public?
I, I have something to say to the council and PWA and the public, but not necessarily. The object of the October PWA report was to provide data for feasibility of developing the Luffenholz watershed. This is according to my memory of what Jack said when he insisted on getting a PWA report. He wanted to compare the data of feasibility and feasibility includes costs. PWA provided a geology report, which was lifted from college textbooks and answered a few questions. There was no data on costs. The question about other municipalities having a similar system proposed for Luffenholz has been clarified. The answer is no. Morro Bay Cambrian Atascadero installed water tanks many years ago. They have no recharge ponds. Today, one of the towns was in stage four water drought. The other two have systems that more closely resemble Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District's system. Okay, so here we are a few months later. The council made the decision on, apparently to me, based on a motion, not on data. There were two reports given at the meeting. There were two um uh reports uh given at the meeting. And uh, GHD, I believe, very clearly um provided data for um Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. Okay, here we are a few months later. And PWA is coming back for between nineteen thousand and twenty-four thousand dollars for feasibility study, for feasibility study. Okay, which is needed for any hope of getting a grant. Now, as far as finding property owners and land and so on, Mr. Madrone spoke at quite a length several times. He's been up in that watershed for X number of years. Um, he's identified, I think, between two and four people who are interested. And he's finally getting around to doing two um catchment ponds. Um, I don't know how much progress he's made in the last few months. We'll see if they're up and running by this summer.
And Paula, your, uh, your three minutes is up, so please uh wrap up your comments.
Okay. A question for the, for the council. Does the city put out bids for projects like this? Is there uh a dollar value that over a certain amount? And is PWA the only game in town that, that can do this work?
Eli, can you uh answer on the bidding process, please?
Yeah, uh, whenever you have a particular project in mind, you, you can go out to bid. Uh, however, you can also have a master services agreement uh with a uh a, a company that you feel, you know, can address the specific needs that you have. So this is a, a wide open master services agreement that anytime we want to uh have a task, such as the one task that's attached here as task order one, that we could request their service. Um, and, and of course, we still have GHD and we have also a master services agreement with them. So that we, you know, we could turn to GHD when we need them for some kind of engineering work. And then we can turn to Pacific Watershed Associates when we need them for some specific work. Uh, so this is geared towards the arena of what Pacific Watershed uh would deal with, uh, with this task order one.
Thank you, Eli. Go ahead, Jim.
Just a quick suggestion. Uh, am I unmuted, by the way?
You're, you're, we can hear you.
Okay. Uh, the, the present treatment plan is not sitting on property that's owned by the city of Trinidad. It's on the old right away uh for the road. And it's actually owned uh entitled by the county of Humboldt. You may want to explore the idea of using adjacent county uh road right of way, which is on flat ground on the old grade, which is the reason that it was originally built. The treatment plant was originally built there to see if the county would allow uh tanks on that right of way adjacent to and to the north of uh the um uh present treatment plant, the same way they're allowing the treatment plant to exist on the old right of way. Just a suggestion.
Thank you, Jim. Other questions regarding that, remember, we're talking about the master services agreement with Pacific Watersheds and task number one to identify proper other comments uh regarding those, that agenda item. All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for uh further discussion. Or a motion regarding the agenda item as, as stated.
I move to accept the uh master agreement plan with Pacific Watershed Associates. Second in.
All right, we have a first and a second to accept the, the master services agreement. Uh, Gabe, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We've got a motion from Councilmember Davies and a second from West to approve the master services agreement with Pacific Watershed Associates. And we'll start with uh Councilmember Grover.
Uh, no.
Councilmember West.
Yes.
Councilmember Davies.
Yes.
And Mayor Ladwig.
Yes.
Motion passes three to one with Councilmember Grover voting no.
Thank you very much, Mr. Adams. Moving on to item number.
If I could interrupt, um, yes, I'm going to suggest that we actually have a, a second vote specifically for uh task order number one, uh so that it's clear in the record.
Okay.
That we've voted on both the agreement and the task order.
Good enough. I will make a motion that we approve task order number one uh with Pacific Watersheds.
Second.
Mr. Adams.
Okay, we've got a motion from Mayor Ladwig, seconded by Councilmember Grover to approve and authorize task order one with Pacific Watershed Associates.
Seconded by Davies.
Oh, I'm sorry, Davies. Thank you. Uh, starting with Councilmember Grover.
And I am going to abstain in this. I don't, um, I didn't get to review this enough.
Okay. Councilmember West.
Yes.
Councilmember Davies.
Yes.
And Mayor Ladwig.
Yes.
Passes three votes yes to one abstention.
Thank you very much. And thanks also, uh, Eli for making that distinction and clarification. So at this point, we'll move on to item number three, discussion decision regarding water system drought resiliency funding update. Eli.
Okay, um, so Becky, our grants administrator has prepared a uh report and the update in the packet. And I'll turn it over to Becky so she can um give the update.
Thank you, Eli, and thank you, council. Um, so this, most of this is self-explanatory, um, providing a little bit of update about um, the different grant uh opportunities that the city has either applied for or is in the process of applying for. Um, at the previous council meeting, the council approved a resolution for submitting a grant application to the multi-benefit drought relief grant. And at that time, we had identified uh the projects that council had supported, which included additional water storage, repairing leaky water lines. And um after that meeting, uh, the West Haven Community Services District approached um staff again, um, having regarding a, a possible emergency intertie between our two water systems. And um so in this report, it uh outlines what an emergency intertie is. And um this, the inner tie is also a very eligible component that could be, that we could apply for through the multi-benefit drought relief grant. And um, we believe that we could submit three projects. One for the emergency intertie. And uh, because we don't know the success of our small community drought relief proposal, uh, we thought it made sense to apply through this uh opportunity. Also for water storage, uh, this, this would be um treated water storage up at our water storage tank site uh for additional water storage and additional water line replacement so that we are uh replacing the most likely um, the most vulnerable pipe that is most likely leaking. And we do have twenty-five percent um leak um ratio, twenty-five percent of our water is disappearing through leaks, most likely. So um, the bottom line is, staff is um suggesting that we consider the inner tie, emergency inner tie um to include in this uh grant. And that the council directs staff to develop a, a memorandum of understanding or an agreement with the West Haven Community Services District um regarding an inner tie, how an emergency intertie would work. And um also because we are um, there's a lot to these grants. Um, I think in this report, I tried to communicate that uh, there's a lot of uncertainties when you're launching into a grant application, what will be needed. Uh, we will need additional funding to complete this grant application, but also the drinking water um state revolving fund, which we were looking to um develop a capital improvement plan and several projects um to be shovel ready. And so we were requesting an additional um six thousand dollars for assistance with developing those applications. And um, so if there's questions, um, I'm happy to, to try and answer them. And um otherwise, I'll let you um make your consideration.
Thank you very much, uh, Becky. And if I could, Tom, just a second, just to, just to sort of recap, um, the application for the emergency inner tie is just that for emergency. Just to be clear, that, that a connection with a West Haven Water District is uh for emergencies only and that MOU language uh would be developed. Because of the timing, uh, we wouldn't, we were not able to really vet that MOU um in the council to, to meet the grant application deadline. So uh, that MOU will be critical to make sure that we clearly define emergency and how that water uh works back and forth between the two municipalities. Uh, but now we're able to really pursue three different um avenues, the leaky pipe, the storage and the inner tie. So this is a great update. Thank you very much, Becky, for, for bringing this to our attention. Uh, Tom, I saw that your hand came up.
Yeah, I just, so this um, I'm, I'm happy to see the inner tie proposal come up, first of all. Um, I know it's been discussed for quite some time. Um, and my other question was, so this, we approved six thousand dollars or something like that at the last meeting, I recall, or maybe two meetings ago for assistance. So this is an additional for this particular grant?
So uh, there are, um, we've worked on the small community drought relief grant and the drinking water state revolving fund planning grant. And now the multi-benefit drought relief grant. So the council had approved fourteen thousand um from July through um November. And uh, the work on the small community uh drought relief grant um actually took more time than we anticipated because we ended up putting three projects in. Or no, so, sorry, two projects in there. So it was more um effort than we had anticipated, you know, if we were just going to choose one project. So um, so anyway, we just kind of got, we started eating into the funding that we were going to use for the drinking water SRF. So we just were looking for a little bit of extra to um really be able to finish all three of these applications. So it would bring the total up to twenty thousand dollars for um all, all of these projects.
Okay, thank you.
And, and just to, what I've learned is that the need here is that the, the grant administrator, Becky, um, has, to make a grant very competitive, needs some technical input. And so that's where this is coming from to uh, to, that the grant, the granting agency is going to look for some technical components of the grant. And that's where, that's where this money will be used. So I just want to make that clear.
Mm-hmm. And actually, I just have one more comment. Um, we just found out that the um, the, the deadline for the drink, the multi-benefit drought grant um actually has changed. I said it was, I said it was for um, um, sorry, there's some extra noise in my house and I'm a little bit distracted. Um, the deadline was December seventeenth. At this point, they, the deadline is in um January. So we have a little extra time. So it is possible that we could check back in with council um on the January meeting date, the eleventh, um, because the deadline is the fourteenth. So um, and I did not know that when I wrote this um staff report. So uh, just a little additional information.
Thanks for that update. Other questions from the council before I bring it out to the general public? Okay, uh, any comments, questions from the public regarding this agenda item to um seek additional funding for an emergency intertie to multi-benefit? All right, uh, quiet crew, um, bringing it back to council for recommendations for a motion.
Hey, um, I'll make a motion that we direct staff to develop the emergency inner tie proposal and negotiate emergency inner tie MOU or agreement with West Haven Community Service District for council approval. Also direct staff to include the emergency intertie project application for Trinidad multi-benefit water resilience project and approve an additional six thousand dollar for water system funding assistance.
Second in.
All right, we have a first and a second. Uh, Mr. Adams, can you uh vote for us, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify, that motion is also, it's in the staff report section of the packet. So if anybody needs to review it, it's three bullet points. Mr. Grover said it very clearly. Uh, we'll start with uh Councilmember Grover.
Aye.
And Ms., uh, Councilmember West.
Yes.
Councilmember Davies.
Yes.
And Mayor Ladwig.
Yep.
Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. And thanks, uh, Becky, for uh sharing all the different information with us. It's uh, there's a lot going on right now. Um, so thanks for, for the hard work. And we will move on to item number four, discussion presentation regarding the general plan update. So I know that we have uh Ms. Parker on the, on the call. We want to jump right in. Or Eli, do you have any opening words for us?
Yeah, you could turn it straight over to Trevor.
There you go, Trevor. Floor is yours.
Thank you. So um, as requested at the last meeting, I um have provided you with some of the elements of the general plan that the Planning Commission has been working on. Um, you have actually seen the clean versions of these, but very briefly, we didn't spend a lot of time discussing them. And then in addition, I have also provided you the sort of interim drafts that um show the track changes and the responses to Coastal Commission staff comments um that have been added recently. And then I also included some, some figures mostly for, for background. Um, so you can see what the Coastal Commission comments were based on. Um, but we are in the process of, of updating all the figures. So they are, at this point, interim drafts. And I'm, I'm happy to take questions um as well as specific and general input on, on. input on, on these, um, on the introduction and the land use chapter of the general plan.
Uh, thanks, Trevor. And just for my clarification, so I know when I'm looking at comments, uh, KC, I'm assuming you're TP. I just wanna, I'm just curious who the comment?
That's right. So there's a, a KC, which was um Kristen Kenyon, who actually has now moved on to the city of Eureka. Um, and then Tamara Gedek, which is our, our local coastal staff person. Um, are, are the two commenters from the Coastal Commission on the introduction element.
Okay, just wanted to make sure for folks who are able to review the packet, who, who's making what comments? So at this point, um, I'm gonna turn it over to the council for questions for Trevor. Uh, comments from the, all the different versions that we're seeing.
Dave? Kind of wanted to make a comment because of, I had the opportunity in local government and Hsu to work on this general plan for a semester. So it's nice to see it actually evolve into like the recommendations my professor and I came up with and to actually watch it come to fruition here. And especially in this format, once you get used to this Google Docs, how you can share documents and stuff like that. I've been doing that with some uh my other business endeavors. So thank you for this. Um, I like the, I like to see the before and after versions.
And just, uh, so we have the common version and then the clean version. If that, if you could just again um remind us what stage we're at is the clean version where the comments have been accepted by the Coastal Commission and we're in need of city input. If you could just review that process one more time for?
Yeah, so, so the Coastal Commission provided comments in a couple of formats. They, they wrote some letters with some general comments. They had some specific comments on, on different elements. And then they also took the word versions of those and, and made comments and, and actually their own edits sometimes um within the document itself. So, so they provided comments in those different ways. So the track changes is, shows their comments. So the version that I got back from Coastal Commission staff as well as my responses and my edits in response to their comments, both the general ones and the ones in the document. Um, I, I did make a note that they did not actually make comments within the land use element itself like they did with, with the other elements, um, but they did make comments in one of their letter. Um, in addition, the changes also represent changes that were discussed at the Planning Commission meetings. So there are some edits that both city staff and the Planning Commission, we put on, put in based on, you know, new information, um, that sort of thing and discussions at, at Planning Commission hearings. So at this point, those have been accepted and approved or recommended by the Planning Commission. And then the clean versions have accepted all those changes and, and deleted the comments. So you're looking at the final current version.
So if I'm on page one sixty-five of the packet, um, chapter two, land use element, introduction, so on and so forth, that's the clean version, right?
Let me, yes, so it starts on page one sixty-five. The current clean version that has been recommended by the Planning Commission, yes.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, I, again, I, I appreciate that. I know it's probably um old hat to you, but it's new stuff to me, so I appreciate that. So um questions, again, back to the council, questions, comments, uh, is this general plan, chapter two, um, acceptable in terms of uh working document for the city? Uh, I believe we have, we use this every, in every five years, we, we update it. So this would be our, our working document for anything regarding land use for the next five years. So any questions, comments from the council that we wanna uh raise with the clean version?
And, and just to clarify, um, it is recommended that general plans are updated at least once every five years. And one of the problems with the current general plan is that it has not been regularly updated. So it's just gotten so out of date that it's really difficult to work with. Um, but the, the planning, the overall planning horizon for this general plan would be actually twenty years.
Twenty, okay, twenty years.
Well, I'm just impressed with the whole thing and how much work goes into this. Rather remarkable. It, it, I thought it looked like something that could guide you see at this point, but I'd like to, I, I'm gonna have to go look at more again because it's, there's a lot there. But I just think it's a remarkable job, just looking at this, how much work there is in this whole thing. And this is, this, this could just, how many, you pretty much come up with a, a kind of a a working draft? How many of them have we got this far?
I, I do not know offhand. Um, you know, the, the general plan update started and actually originally in the late nineties. Um, and it went through maybe about five years into the early two thousands. And then it, it got put on hold um to work on some other things, the septic program, some other things. Um, it was restarted again in around two thousand eight um with the watershed plan, the, the, the Trinidad West Haven Integrated Watershed Management Plan. We, we started doing some background studies and working on the update again. And, and it has been put on hold periodically since then. But really, this is the document that has evolved since two thousand eight. So um, it, and, and it is, it's um, you know, Trinidad is held to the same standards and, and legal requirements that, uh, you know, the city of LA um is held to. So um, it is difficult for a city the size of, of Trinidad to meet these, these requirements.
I understand that. And so of, of the various um, planning difficulties, the areas, this is one of, how many is it altogether?
You mean with the land use element? How many elements?
Our whole general plan. How many pieces are there?
So there's seven state required elements. Um, we have combined a few of them. Um, the, the introduction chapter provides a, a summary of, of each of them. So there's land use, um, there's conservation, open space, which we've combined. And then also included recreation, which is a coastal act requirement. Um, we, there's a circulation element, which deals with not just roads, but public services as well and energy use. Um, there is the annoyance element. That one's not gonna be of much interest to the Coastal Commission. And then the public safety element is, is um gonna be a, a big one for the Coastal Commission and then housing. So those are the seven state required elements. And then um, we have also included for Trinidad, a, a cultural and historic resources element as well as a community design element, which, which the Planning Commission is working on right now.
Well, thank you. This is, I think it's remarkable what, what has to be done. And I, I appreciate this work. And I think it looks very good to me. A lot of work to read it though. Thank you.
Trevor, uh, section seven, uh, the harbor, uh, harbor area. Uh, in this, and obviously things, this is from June seventeenth, but um, it says that the Rancheria has applied to transfer the majority into trust. Uh, that has moved considerably forward. Um, is that something that is um, that the commission, that you will work with on the commission to update um in terms of the, the general plan and the, the fee to trust, the move, the fee to trust?
Yeah, it's likely that that whole section will need to be reworked and will, in, instead of being policies of the city, they might be recommendations to the Rancheria. Um, you know, we, it wasn't clear how that process was gonna move forward, if or when it was ever gonna be finalized. So, you know, we continued to work on a, a harbor section. It was an important component for the Coastal Commission because right now it's a, it's not a certified area of the, of Trinidad's LCP. So it was an important part for the Coastal Commission. So yes, that will, you know, need to be revised um once that process is finalized.
Okay. It's, I mean, as soon as you, as soon as you sign on a document, it's out of date, right? Cause things keep changing. I just thought that with those changes happening concurrently with this general plan discussion, I imagine the Coastal Commission will provide that language sooner than later. Other, uh, any questions, any other comments uh from the council before I bring it out to, go ahead, Tom?
Yes, thanks for bringing all this forward. Um, it's nice to see the, the ev- the evolution of the document. And as I read through it, I, I see in many places it says um consistent with the character of the community. So as we're uh chasing Caltrans grants, et cetera, um, for projects, let's keep that in mind, consistent with the character of the community as our general plan uh states in very many places throughout. Thanks.
And I also see that, you know, the, like the accessory dwelling unit section, um, instead of, of trying to develop our own set of rules for ADUs, the, it, it refers to following the guidelines of the coastal act and such. So I imagine that that frees us up to not have to micromanage these different elements. If, if we have something that's gonna be, in essence, overwritten by um a different act, then it's maybe it's a lot easier of, of a document to use if we have it in our general plan to go one way and the coastal act that requires us to go a different way. So I appreciate that, again, the track changes to see that. At this point, I think I'll bring it out to the community if anyone has any questions, uh, comments regarding this discussion item. Now is your time. Alrighty, uh, seeing none, bringing it back to the council. Uh, what are you, uh, what are you asking for us at this time, Trevor, in terms of council action on this general plan, land use element?
Well, I, I know it's a lot to absorb, so I, you know, I imagine that this would not be our last discussion. Um, so there's, you know, with the, with the Planning Commission, sometimes they would email me comments in between meetings for, for long um documents. And then I would, you know, bring those comments and responses back at the next meeting. So that's one way, if, you know, if you wanna go that route or have that option, we can, you know, go through them section by section or, you know, council member by council member, if you have specific comments or, or changes. Um, so it's, it's your document. And so um, you know, I, I'm just looking for uh the council's input. And, you know, for, before we, we finalize these, um, this won't be the last time you see them. We'll go through element by element, but at some point, the entire document will come back to the council as well. But I think it's good um to look at them individually. They're a little bit, it's a little bit easier to, to look at them one at a time.
Well, I for one, I'm, I'm very happy with this. Um, I did read the whole thing. I, I couldn't pass a test with a hundred percent on all of the finer details, but um, this clearly is one of the, sort of the overarching elements in the general plan. Um, and I appreciate its detail on, on all sorts of different levels. So, and the, all the, the figures too really helped with the zoning and whatnot. For us visual learners, those figures are, are really useful. So um, I'm feeling really good about this and, and look forward now to building on it with other elements as, as the Planning Commission. What is our next element or two that you are feeling is ready to bring to the council?
So the next one would probably be the conservation and open space element. If you're ready to, to move on from these and, and e- even if you do move on from these, you can continue to submit comments as other things come to mind. Um, you know, other elements might, might bring some, some things in these elements to mind. But yeah, conservation, that's a, that's a really a big one. I had, I had actually originally started with that one to give you. And I thought, well, no, let's go back, even though you've seen these, let's, let's go back to these. And the introduction is good. Cause conservation, there were so many comments, it's a long element to begin with. And there are so many comments from the Coastal Commission that there's like three different track changes versions to, because it just got too messy. So that's, it's gonna be even more pages for just the one element. Um, but that would be, that would be the next one that's, it's ready to go whenever you're ready for it.
Counsel, do we have a, a sense of when we're ready for it?
Next year.
I'm ready for it in January. I, I, I am so eternally grateful for uh, the work that the Planning Commission is doing and bringing us these so that we, we can, we can stop seeing a document with two thousand or less nineteen eighty dates in it. I'd, I'd love to see this thing updated. So if you can, if you can, if the, if the Planning Commission is ready to bring us another element um in January, great, let's do it. I know that we're going into the holidays, but um, Jack?
Now, when could we, when would we be able to get that? If it's gonna be that big an element, when do we receive that?
Uh, we're, so the Planning Commission's done with it and I just sort of cleaned it up and, and, you know, created the PDFs for the council. And so they, they literally are, are ready to go. I just have to write an, a, an agenda report. Um, and then after that, it'd be circulation and, and the Planning Commission is also done with that. Um, that one, yeah, I still have to put it into the PDFs and, and finalize a few responses to comments. But um, those, those would be the next ones. Um, the next would be the community design, which the, which the Planning Commission is working on now. So, so I could give that to you in January if you, if you have room on your agenda.
Would it be possible to get that conservation, open space before, uh, certainly soon? So we can have it before you kind of take off and go over regularly?
Absolutely.
And, and I'm not opposed to the incremental updates either. I just think it's a lot easier to absorb it if you get exposed to it a couple of times to, um, because they do, there is overlap in the elements too, and it's easier for me to tie them together.
So what I'm hearing is that we would uh be able to review this thing um at least a week or two in advance of the, of the January meeting, which really means by the end of this year, right? I mean, we're?
I can, I can get it to you for Christmas. Merry Christmas.
Awesome, awesome. Uh, yeah, uh, having the time, you know, trying to read this thing between Friday afternoon and, and Tuesday evening is, is a tall lift. So, or heavy order, or whatever the metaphor is, uh, the sooner we can get it, the better. Um, and, and if that could also be made available to the public through the website or something, so that everybody has a chance to, to digest it, who, who wants to? That would be helpful. So any closing comments then on the land use element? Again, thank you for your work. Uh, Planning Commission has been working very hard and thanks for this update.
Tom? It might be helpful, um, if it's going up on the city website, that the city sends out a, an email, such as the one for the meetings, directing people where to go on the website, because that can be kind of hard to locate things sometimes, especially on, so many people are on mobile devices and on our website is really not mobile device friendly. So if they could, you know, get directions as to where to click, that would be helpful, I believe.
Good, good suggestion.
I will, I will work with uh Gabe on, on getting something on the website.
All right, thanks again. Um, we will move on to our final discussion decision item for this evening, which is regarding city council vacancy appointment. Um, so uh, current councillors, this is my proposal. Uh, we have in our packet two uh letters of interest from uh residents in Trinidad. Uh, I believe they are still on the meeting. Yes, they are. What I propose is that we offer a chance for them to, to, you know, share their thoughts, get, seek public input. And then when the time comes, um, when we used to do this in person, we would all pass a piece of paper with our pick, since there are two, uh, pass a piece of paper to Gabe for tallying. I suggest that, Gabe, if you can, activate the chat feature uh for this meeting, and then each of us send a private message to Gabe with our vote, um, at which point he will tally them and then we'll, uh, he'll uh announce the, the recipient. So does that make sense?
Yeah, um, I'm not sure that's actually legal and I know that's been done in the past. I think votes need to be made in public. So I am against voting in private and coming out with a tally.
And, and for what it's worth, Tom, I, 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 you're right, we have done that in the past and then the, the votes were announced publicly. It's, it's six of one, half a dozen other, as long as it's in the public uh purview eventually. But we can, we can do that. Um, we can make- Purview eventually, but we can, we can do that. We can make our votes. Gabe can do a roll call vote. We could do that as well. But I do want to just offer up folks, both. Mr. Morgan and Ms. Kelly to have the opportunity to speak. We have the letters of interest in the packet. Does that, is that an agreed upon then procedure, council? I see a lot of heads nodding. At this point. I will, we have two letters of interest, one from Cheryl Kelly, one from Mike Morgan. I will ask Ms. Kelly if you have any words that you wish to share with the council. And then after that, we'll ask Mr. Morgan.
I'd be happy to just make a few comments. I know most of you by now have worked with me and you know. Kind of a little bit about me, but for those who don't, I'll just mention that. I've owned a home in the Trinidad area for a little over 20 years. I've actually lived full time in Trinidad for three to four years. I think it's about three and a half years now. And I'm a retired high tech executive. I have a pretty extensive business background, but. I was new to public work. And so being on the planning commission for the last three years. Has been really beneficial in understanding kind of what works and and what doesn't in city government. I personally put a lot of time and energy into being prepared. I like to really go deep on the subjects that at least have come before the planning commission, but. I also try to stay very open minded. So I tend to not make any final decisions until I hear all the public input, all the input from the other commissioners. And really get a sense of kind of holistically what the right approach is. So that's just, that's just a little bit about how I how I think about things. I was hesitant to leave the planning commission, in all honesty, because I really feel like we're getting traction, as you heard tonight, and. And thank you for the kind words about the general plan. And the kudos is really to the to the commissioners at large and to Trevor, who who's been a great partner. So. Anyway, really appreciate hearing that from you all. And and I made it hard to kind of make the decision to to put my hat, my name in the hat for city council. But I did it because several people came to me and 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 I. I won't name names, but one person actually has disagreed with me on a number of issues. And when he came to me twice and said, you know, I'd really like to see you. Join this city council. I was so so impressed with that. I respect him a great deal for that. And it also made me realize that. You know, it's just, it's a community that I I do want to continue to serve. So anyway, because that's that's the right attitude. We can disagree sometimes and still respect each other and that that's really important to me. Anyway, I'm live here in Tucson, Arizona, so I'm an hour ahead of you guys and. And I'm probably not really perky at this point, but but those are my comments and and if you have any questions, you know, please let me know.
Thank you very much, Cheryl. Any questions for Cheryl at this point? All right, Mr. Morgan, you have the floor.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
So I just have a quick question before I, everyone knows me and my record speaks for itself. The letter that I sent in is pretty. Pretty straightforward. I. Know Patty Fleischner wrote a letter of support. And I didn't see it in the pack. So maybe Gabe can answer me about if the council received a copy of that.
I know that I did not receive a, sorry, Gabe, I know I did not receive a copy. Sorry, Gabe, I cut you off. Were you gonna, were you gonna say something?
Yeah, I was just looking to, Ms. Fleischner's letter is included in the packet online, public comments, but I was just looking to see if her email was sent to you to to all the council members directly. And that I should know here in just a second. Bear with me.
Hey, Gabe?
Yeah.
Or or Mr. Mayor, your honorable mayor. Could we have Gabe just read that into the council in a minute?
That works for me. I did not see it on the website in time, so I'm happy with any public comment that was submitted to. To make it to the public record.
And I'll allow that just to be my statement. How's that?
Okay, Gabe, are you able to find that letter?
Yeah, I have it right here in the desktop. And if you'd like me to read it, I'm happy to do so.
Please do.
So Ms. Fleischner writes, Dear City Council, she writes in support of appointing former former councilman. Former planning commissioner, former former greater Trinidad Chamber of Commerce President. Volunteer Fire Department Captain, Trinidad Business Owner Michael Morgan to fill Columbus's vacant seat. Before you faint, she says, because based on the city closed session announcements, there appears to be city litigation pending with Mr. Morgan. Please consider all the past and present goodies accomplished. When he was in the community. Leadership positions, he's always treated colleagues, applicants, members of the public businesses. And customers with the utmost professionalism and courtesy. He was unbiased. In his decision making and recommendations in a public forum. What do you have to lose by encouraging bringing out the best in him now? During the coronavirus challenges, small businesses have been among the worst affected. I don't know the details of litigation, however, because tempers seem to flare in town when visited lodging is discussed. I expect there has been some turmoil for Mr. Morgan in trying to save his business. Which has been an in, not an STR, since the mid 1980s and has been, has accommodated many very happy guests. I remember the horrible and expensive years of litigation for the city and litigants in the 1990s over trails. On reflection, passions ran high. Many harsh pronouncements were made. Diverse views were expressed at every council meeting. Did these personally and professionally destructive lawsuits satisfy anyone? Did they make our beautiful town a better place? Was there a positive outcome? Were they worth the money and agony? I suppose each of us has to try to answer these questions individually. I cannot say that. The city nor the citizenry grew more content or unified. This is a different time with different problems. How about giving Mr. Morgan another chance at being a problem solver at which he excelled? Instead of considering him a troublemaker. We all might be surprised and I hope pleased at the results. Best regards and wishes, Patricia Fleischner.
Thank you, Gabe, for reading that. I know that was above and beyond. So I appreciate you reading that. At this point, then, Mr. Morgan has asked that that letter be his his comments. At this point, does any, do any of the councillors have questions for Mr. Morgan? All right, seeing none, we have comments now from two community members seeking to fill a vacant city council. Seat. At this point, I'd like to open it up for public comment. All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. At this point, we have. Like I said, we have our two candidates who've expressed their interest in filling a vacant seat. At this point, I think, Tom, you're right, we should vote in public. And so. Gabe, if you could do a roll call vote where councillors will make their selection from our two. Residents who've submitted interest in being on the council.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, so. We have two candidates. Ms. Cheryl Kelly and Mike Morgan. And if I understand you correctly, I will be making a motion? Or reading each name and hearing the votes per person?
The way I, the way I would like to do that is that, yeah, each councillor submits a name. That's who we're we're voting to appoint. And then, once that's done, then we have our, if it's, if it's. A majority, then we have our councillor.
Okay, through the chat feature, correct?
No, I believe Tom is right that we should do this in public, even though we would have announced it anyway. Let's just go right to it. And so you call a councillor, we we give a name and we make our vote that way.
I follow you. Okay, so we'll go ahead and start with. Councilmember Grover.
I'd like to see Ms. Kelly in the position.
Councilmember West.
Just like to thank both of these people for. Trying to join the council, but based on what I saw Cheryl Kelly doing. Her work as planning commissioner, I think should be a terrific addition to the council topic, Cheryl Kelly.
Councilmember Davies.
Cheryl Kelly.
And Mayor Ladwick.
Cheryl Kelly.
We have a unanimous four vote for the appointment of. Cheryl Kelly to the vacant seat on the city council expiring December 2022.
Thank you very much, Gabe, for that. And again, I echo what Jack says. I appreciate when members of the public want to serve. Cheryl, welcome to city council. We will swear you in officially at our. January meeting.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for the vote of confidence and I look forward to working with you all.
And I look forward to you finding someone to fill your seat in the planning commission. I'm not going to lie. So we are. We have robbed Peter to pay Paul on this one, and we definitely want to put it out there to the public to to join the planning commission. Like you said, there's a great momentum on the planning commission. And we would definitely want to keep going with that. So with that, thank you very much for this. Item and that concludes our discussion decision items for the evening. At this point, we have future agenda items. So we have. A large discussion for the conservation element. For our January meeting, we will have an update from the the traffic. Safety item that we had this evening, which will come back to us in January. We will continue to find. Places for any of our water development, our water resiliency efforts in January. Are there other items that we want to? Make sure that we have in January or Eli, is there anything that we have to have in January?
Yeah, if anyone wants to suggest anything. Right offhand, I can't think of anything that has to be on the agenda. Beyond what you mentioned.
Okay, I hope I remember what I mentioned, but you wrote it down.
I wrote it down.
Thank God. Other, other future agenda items then? All right, as they come to you, please let us know by email or coming by the city hall. So thank you very much. For your participation this evening and this adjourns our December 14 meeting.
Thank you, Cheryl. Thanks, everybody. At the end of 2021.
Yep.
Next year we'll see you.